Sorry.
Good evening, let me call this meeting to water. It's December ninth, twenty fourteen, and it's now six thirty. We have the regularly scheduled board meeting today. Determined, we have a quorum. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
Present.
Mr. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eric Ramírez.
Present.
And Ms. Judy Solis.
Present.
And Mr. Ruben Klein.
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia is present as well, and we do have a quorum. Now, everybody will please rise, we'll begin with the invocation. Today, we've invited Mr. Benito Sáenz, a local resident from Gruia to...
May he.
For God, for country, for our precious world.
So, yeah. And we have Mr. Benito Sáenz, a local resident from Gruia, who has been an educator for fifty years. Fourteen of those years that he was employed at this district. And we thank Mr. Sáenz for coming today, and he will lead us in the invocation today.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your presence with us here tonight, and we thank you for that. During this time of Advent, as we prepare with great anticipation for the birth of our Lord, we want to thank you for all the blessings which you have bestowed upon our schools, our communities, our school leaders, our teachers, our staffs, and especially our students. You have blessed us. You have blessed our students with so much talent in academics, fine arts, athletics. You have blessed them with good manners, excellent behavior, and great attitudes. And above all, Father, you have blessed them with a positive outlook of life. We ask, as we get ready for the Christmas break, we ask you to protect our students, faculty, and staffs. May they enjoy a restful break. May they be free from harm and have a safe and healthy holiday. May they welcome you with and provide a posada in their hearts for you, Father. And may they ring in the new year in a spirit of friendship and love thy neighbor. And Father, we ask you to pour out your blessings abundantly upon the members of the school board. They sacrifice so much, volunteering to serve the community so that our students may have a chance to succeed in life. They spend countless hours to be able to provide a quality educational program, guide them, Father, so that all their decisions are based on sound judgment with honor and pride in serving their communities. Finalmente, Padre Celestial, te pedimos una bendición para todos los empleados de este gran distrito escolar. Ellos también se esfuerzan para proveer lo mejor para el éxito de todos los estudiantes. Te lo pedimos en el nombre de nuestro Señor Jesucristo.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Primo, that was beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Sáenz. And if everybody will remain standing, we do have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Vial, you have several students here, if you could at least have one of our students lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah?
I think that would be appropriate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was awesome.
Section four, we have approval of minutes for regular board meeting of November twelfth, twenty fourteen, public hearing November twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, and the special board meeting of November twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, a motion carries. We move to item one, student recognitions for Gruia High School CAT students. We begin with a certified nurses assistant, followed by the phlebotomy. This presentation by Ms. Vial.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board President, Board Members, audience, and community members present. At this time, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Adelina Villarreal. I'm the Career and Technology Director. It is known as CATE, or Career and Technology Education. This year at Gruia High School, we have through South Texas Nursing Academy, Mr. Dimas Deleon being the owner here, present. He's helping us out to getting our students at Gruia High certified. In December, they will be graduating with their certificates in three types of certificates: phlebotomy, certified nurses assistant, and CPR. To tell you a little bit about the program is the nursing director, which will be presently addressing you right now, Mr. Godino.
Board members, good evening. My name is Fernando Godino, and I'm the Director for South Texas Nursing Academy. What we have done with these kids is we've taken them through two courses, one of them being the Nurse Assistant Course, which consists of one hundred hours. Sixty of those hours include didactic studies, where they learn on basic nursing interventions and basic nursing skills. After that, we took them to the nursing home, where they were able to practice for forty hours of clinical practice, and successfully finished, one hundred percent of the students finished the nurse assistant programs. Once they completed that course, we had them go through the phlebotomy program, which consists of eighty hours. Sixty of those hours consisted of didactic, intravenous, infectious diseases, and blood draws. Twenty of those hours consisted of clinical practice, which one hundred percent of the students completed also. I want to thank you for the opportunity to let us work with your students and have such great outcome with them. We're gonna go ahead and proceed with the presentation of the certificates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To help us out with the presentations, we would like for the board members to come forward here. What we will be doing, I have the Career and Technology Teacher Leader from Gruia High School, Ms. Mari Vel Villarreal. I also have Mr. Danny Garcia, also named like our Board President, that also helps me at the Career and Technology Department. He is the law enforcement teacher that will be assisting you. They're gonna be giving you three certifications, so that you could hand out to the students as I call their name. To help us out, we have the principal, Mr. Serapio Triáellas. We also have his assistant principal, Ms. Teresa Azola. So if you could please join us on the floor while we'll call the students' names, and Ms. Vial and Danny will be giving the certificates while we call the students' names. So children, I'll be calling your name, you come over here, and one of the board members will have your certification, so they'll be giving them to you. Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to join us? Ready? Giya Ann Pérez. Children, can you turn around so public information can take a picture of you? Next, we have Kimberly Falcone. Next, we have Janet González. Itabrión. Gisele Salinas. Liz Petrevino. Aldo Peña. Ruby González. Mayela García. Liris B. López. Omar Nioszaléuski. Katia M. Núñez. Deborah Sáenz. At this moment, the nursing instructors would like to recognize Deborah for being the highest ranking student at Gruia High School in the program. Carolina Casares. Carolina? Odalis Robles. Odali? Jesús Solís. Gabriela Sarinana. Cynthia Laniz. We would like for you all children to take a picture with the administration here, please, before we continue. Thank you.
Before we continue with the meeting, our chairperson and Curriculum Committee, Ms. Judy Solis, would like to address the parents of these wonderful students.
To the parents and to the students, I congratulate you all. I'm the Chairperson for the Committee of Curriculum and Instruction, and so yesterday we got a pre-presentation about what was gonna happen today and about the program. And I'm so excited that our school district offers this type of program for all of our students, and that you students took advantage of it. Because this is somewhere, here the district is allowing you all to get real-world, hands-on experience, but during school time, in a school setting, and free of charge. So you're able to pick that as a career path and have an outlet ready for post-high school. And so to all of you, I know that you worked very hard, and I think that the medical field, it's booming. It's never going to, there's always gonna be a demand in that field, so I think that you all are headed in the right direction. I congratulate the parents for encouraging your students to take advantage of these types of programs. And I encourage all of the parents that are here today, tell your compadres, your comadres, tell the other parents, there are these types of programs available where kids can get a leg up while in school. And I think that that is so important, and I, once again, I congratulate you all for your hard work.
Ms. Vial, Ms. Vial, thank you for the presentation. Item number two.
Mr. Board President, that student would like to say something. Is that allowable?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello. I think I speak for all the students in the successful program, we want to thank all the board members and all of those who made this program possible. Thank you. And also a special thanks to Mr. Delgado. He taught us, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vial. Item two, consider and take possible action on travel requests from Rio Grande City High School and Gruia High School. That's self-explanatory. Do you have a motion for an item two? Do you have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, a motion carries. Item three is a review of board member training required by TASB policy. And I'll just read them out. As of twenty fourteen, board member training hours, Dr. Norberto Cantú Jr. completed his new board member orientation. Daniel J. Garcia, myself exceeded the required training. Noey R. González exceeded the required training. Roberto Bobby Gutierrez completed the required training. Mr. Ruben Klein exceeded the required training. And Mr. Eduardo Eric Ramírez has completed his new board member orientation. And Ms. Judy Amanda Solis has also completed the new board member orientation. And we move to item four, consider and take possible action on nomination of committee members to serve on the Revy the Fort Ringo Project. I believe this is an oral presentation. I think we had discussed this in the previous meeting, and we had agreed upon, I believe, it would consist of a committee of seven members. Each member, each board member nominate an individual, and I believe if we can go ahead and nominate a couple of individuals, Ms. Solis.
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Erica Canales, because in speaking with her, she literally wrote a book about Fort Ringo, so I think that she would be a wonderful person to sit on this committee, and I hope that she does accept, I don't know if she's here, but hopefully she would accept this nomination. Okay, excellent.
Also, Mr. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez, do you have any, anyone in mind you would like to nominate?
Serving on committee?
Yes.
That's fine.
Do you have any?
No, no, no staff.
Okay. Mr. Dr. Cantú?
Yes, I would like to nominate Elia Ramos.
Ms., I don't know if Ms. Ramos is here.
I see her.
Oh, Ms. Ramos? Eric Ramírez?
Yes, I'd like to nominate RC Salinas. I don't think there's anybody else who knows the history of Starr County in general more than that person, so it's my honor to nominate RC Salinas.
Mr. Klein?
I would like to nominate Lisa Beas, interim manager.
And myself, I would nominate Mr., I know he expressed some interest in serving this committee, Mr. Joel Salinas. I haven't seen him here today, but if he is, oh, yes. And I believe the two remaining individuals for this committee will be submitted later. So do I have a motion for acceptance of these nominations?
I still move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Dicky Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number five, consider and take possible action on request for permission to advertise for, request for qualifications, RFQs, for annual financial audit services.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Every year we go out for requests for, well, we haven't gone in a couple of years, but we'd like to right now go and request qualifications for our annual audit. The audit is done during the summer sometimes, and it's turned in at the end of the year in December or January, so we would like to advertise for this coming year.
Do we have any discussion?
Is that for the, for the new year?
Yes, sir, this will be for the new year, because we're just about to complete the one that we are working on right now. We'll be sending it to the board in January, so this we can advertise and bring whoever the next, whoever they choose onboard for this coming year.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item five? Do you have a second? We have a second by Mr. Dicky Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on donations to RGC CISD.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of the board, we had one donation that came in for the Rio Grande City Gruia High School, three hundred dollars from the San Isidro PTO to the Mariachis for performance.
Have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vial. Item number seven, consider and take possible action on Starr County Appraisal District payment schedule for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
The Starr County Appraisal District total allocation for the next coming year, fourteen fifteen, is one hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. We do pay it in installments of a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for each quarter, which are due on December, March, June, and September. The payments that we give to the appraisal district, of course, is, they're in charge of appraisals for our tax rolls, and the allotment is based on their budget for the appraisal district, based on our tax levy for the school district.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion on item seven? Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action in Grandi Garbage Collection Company Agreement and Authorization for Superintendent to Execute Agreement.
Mr. President, there's some legal matters that I'd like to discuss with the board and executives, so we can, at this time, convene to executives, so we can discuss those issues.
Yes, it is now six fifty-five. And we'll be entering the executive session under the Texas Government Code, section five-five point zero-seven-one. To water, it is now seven oh five, we're now out of executive session. We do have an item eight on the agenda. Do we have a motion on item eight?
The motion is tabled, Adam, until the attorney get in touch with the CD.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Item nine, consider and take possible action on change order number five, Skanska USA Building Incorporated for final credit of five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars to close the contract.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, we met on December the second with the facilities committee and discussed this change order, and Mr. Garza, our architect, is here to explain it.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name's Delphino Garza, I'm the architect for the Rio Grande City High School. And we have, before you, a change order to close the contract, and they are returning five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars that was left over from the contingencies. So the contract sum would be reduced by this amount.
Yes, Mr. Garza, is correct that we're not paying this money, they're actually, you know...
That is correct, yeah. It was in the contract, but the way it worked out, this, this one is gonna be returned. The contingencies are as such, they're there for special items, and if they're not used, it reverts back to the owner.
Do we have any discussion?
Is the school already complete, Mr. Garza? Fully complete?
Yes, sir, there's, there's always items that are, that will come up. These would be what we call warranty items. Warranty items, it gets the contractor to come back and correct any work deficiencies that come up during the use of the project. So they will be committed for one year to correct these warranty items, and right now we have a list of warranty items that they're working on.
Mr. Garza, on the warranty date, the important date, what was that? I know you told us in the facility, what was it?
I want to say it was July...
July?
July the third. And so, as this building is used, more and more, more items will come about. We call the contractor, and they will come in and remedy the items.
Mr. Garza, you indeed have walked through all the schools and see if you find anything amazing, or it's not a proper install?
We have, but I will again. When you get the teachers in there, in every room, in every closet, they expose some of these items a lot, a lot better than I would, but, but we go, see, the teachers are looking at some things, and I'm looking at others, so between all of us, we come up with a pretty comprehensive list of items.
Okay, there's something wrong, make sure that we repair those items that need to be repaired?
Yes, sir, and we have talked to the contractor, and they have always been very cooperative, and we don't have any reservations... been very cooperative and, uh, we don't have, uh, any reservations that they're going to, you know, leave and leave some, some, uh, some things undone. Uh, these projects, uh, are important to everybody, including the, the general contractor, so, uh, it's, uh, in their best interest to, to work with the owners and, and work these, uh, items, items out.
Mr. Garza, I got one final question. The return of this money is not contingent on anything else?
No, sir.
Verbal otherwise?
No, sir, it's, uh, it's money that, uh, that was in the contingency fund, it wasn't used, and it, it now belongs to the school district.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Did you say you're still conducting walkthroughs there in the building to see or those are completed?
Now, they've, uh, the initial walkthroughs were completed back in July.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, that's not to say that, you know, uh, we, we didn't miss an item, you know, but, uh, uh, we are very familiar with the project, uh, we, uh, go in and out all the time, uh, sometimes we pick up stuff that perhaps was not in the original list and we, uh, make a note of it, we bring it up to the contractor and, uh, uh, I mean, I can't say that they would do everything, but, uh, by and large, uh, we have worked very well with it, with this contractor.
Any more questions? Do, do I have a motion on item nine?
I assume we approve item nine as presented?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Thank you so much.
Uh, item ten, consider and take possible action on budget amendment for twenty fifteen.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, this is our third amendment that we're bringing forward for approval. Uh, it's on page seventy-one. We have our original budget. Anytime that we move any expended, any, uh, budget items from one function to another, the functions are listed there to your left, uh, we are required to get board approval for any movement. The campuses and departments will submit their budget amendments and, uh, will, uh, accumulate everything and bring it to the board for approval. The item that we are approving is the fourth column, which is a twenty fifteen dash three budget amendment. Uh, there's small amounts that are being moved from one budget to another, there is no increase in our total expenditures. Uh, we are current at a hundred and one million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for expenditures. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
No move.
Do we have a, a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Rellis. Item number eleven, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of November twenty-fourteen.
The total tax refund for, uh, the month of November were five hundred and five, uh, fifty, uh, dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, there is a list of the refunds by taxpayer listed on page seventy-five. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Do I have a motion on item eleven?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Dicky Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Rellis. On number item twelve, uh, consider and take possible action on requisition, five thousand and over in a twelve-month aggregate.
We have all the requisitions that came through our office for, that are over five thousand listed on page seventy-six. They all have their proper funding, um, we're just presenting them for approval by the board, you can review them if you have any questions.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion on item twelve?
Will we approve item twelve as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, item, item twelve, the motion is, uh, carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on proposed new hiring schedule to apply retroactively for new teachers.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board. Item thirteen, we respectfully ask for your approval. This was presented in personnel meeting on November twenty-fourth and we did have a public hearing on November twenty-fifth.
Do we have any, any more discussion and questions? Uh, do we have a motion on item thirteen?
I still move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Eddie Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Dr. Salinas.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, item number fourteen, consider possible, take, consider and take possible action on district improvement plan evaluation for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year.
Uh, Mr. President, board members, I represent the Office of Program and Campus Accountability and we submitted three items for your approval. Item fourteen, which is the district improvement plan evaluation for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, request your approval.
Do we have any questions on item fourteen?
No, I would only say that yesterday we met, um, in curriculum instruction and I somewhat reviewed it, it's very dense. Um, I was talking to Mr. Garcia about possibly making that in a more digestible format, perhaps online, but other than that I had no, no issues with it and I, that would be the only point of discussion.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item fourteen?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Mr. Garcia. Uh, uh, item number fifteen?
Uh, fifteen is, um, uh, the district improvement plan for two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen and request for your approval.
Any discussion on item fifteen?
No, again, we discussed it yesterday in committee for curriculum instruction and, um, we got input from all the people that were there, there's various, um, personnel available yesterday and I move that we approve it as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in, we have a second by Mr. Eddie Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on campus improvement plans for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year.
I actually have a question about campus improvement plans.
All right, and, Mr. Garcia, is this, yesterday when we spoke, this is something you said it's fluid, it changes, we adapt it as according to our needs.
That's correct, the campus improvement plan, you know, the teachers, uh, they work with them on the campus, usually after a reach benchmark, when we assess the students and there's particular changes on particular strategies and we need to make adjustments, adjustments are made accordingly, so that's.
Based on teacher input and based on principal's input and based on.
As the data, it's data driven by the campus scores.
Okay, and again, this is one of the items that I said, um, I'd like to see it in a different format, but we'll, we'll talk about that later and I, I would move that we approve it.
Do we have a, a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Eddie Ramirez. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on district integrated improvement plans for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board. We're requesting respectfully for you to approve the bilingual district, uh, integrated improvement plan. Uh, before you, you have a little brief summary of what it is. Uh, we had a real good meeting yesterday with, uh, chairperson, Ms. Judy Solis. If there's any specific, uh, questions, I'm here to answer.
I would only say that yesterday we definitely had a lengthy discussion, I'm sure everybody was wondering why you questioned so much, but I know that a great number of our population, of our students fall under either the ESL or bilingual or LET programs and so that's why I had so many questions, which, um, many of you answered. And, um, as far as what I was presented and all the input I got yesterday, I would move that we would, um, approve this plan as presented through the curriculum committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Eduardo Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Roral. Item number eighteen? Consider and take possible action on early college high school designation application for the twenty four, fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. The early college high school has to apply to Texas Education Agency on a yearly basis for the redesignation of the, uh, early college high school, uh, name. And so that deadline is December the nineteenth and it is, uh, an application that is submitted online along with supporting documentation and so we are requesting permission to go ahead and proceed, all the documentation is ready. We did meet with Ms. Judy Solis yesterday evening and, uh, we had a discussion also about the application and the early college high school. So at this time we're requesting your permission to do so.
And I can only say that I was very impressed with Ms. Gorenas' presentation, it was very thorough, I threw a lot of questions at her and she was, um, definitely prepared to answer them, again, a lot of the other people that were present, they put their input and I know that you said you needed Mr. Garcia's signature, I don't know.
Yes, we took care of that before the board meeting.
Okay, great, yes. And, um, I was, you know, again, excited to hear about all of the opportunities that are being given to our students through our district, um, to hear that students from any background, uh, from immigrants, from the special ed department, from any sort of background, is eligible to get, um, into this program so long as they qualify through that test and is able to receive free college hours.
Correct.
I think that's so important, um, that they can graduate from high school with already, uh, at least an associate's degree, if not an interdisciplinary, um, certificate on their behalf and I think it's excellent, I think that we need to do a better job of promoting this within our district so that parents in our community know the wonderful things that are available for our children and again, I was very impressed with your presentation and I would move that, um, we would approve this plan.
Do we have a second on item eighteen?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Eduardo Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Gorenas.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on Empowering Writers for Middle Schools.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, community members. As presented last night at the curriculum committee meeting and Ms. Judy Solis, our chairperson, we would like, uh, to seek approval for the middle schools, all the middle schools, uh, to contract services with Empowering Writers, uh, and Empowering Writers is a staff development program to improve our students' performance on the writing star. Uh, this particular staff development would be for our students and it would be, uh, in the classroom setting with our, our students as well. We recommend approval as presented last night at the committee meeting.
Yes, and again, we went on and on about that, I was very impressed to know that the students are sort of with the staff, they're taking a staff development training, um, and that from what you say, their schools have had it before, they like it, they like the results and that it's research-based.
Correct.
Um, materials, I think that's very important, that it's been scientifically proven that these strategies work for our kids. So again, I was, I was very happy to hear that and I would move to approve, um, this item as presented.
Do we have a second on item nineteen?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Vareal. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses agreements for high school with STC for spring twenty fifteen.
Again, uh, as, uh, presented to the curriculum committee, uh, last night, uh, we are seeking approval for the dual, uh, dual enrollment courses that we offer, uh, that we will be offering for the spring of two thousand and fifteen. These dual enrollment courses are for all three of our high schools, Real Grande City High School, Gruya High School, and the Purportory for Early College. It also, uh, is also approval for the Demsa Academy, which we currently have at our schools as well. Again, we recommend approval.
And again, just, we discussed this yesterday and, um, again, very happy to see all of the, um, advantages and opportunities being offered to our students, especially with STC being here within our city and that they can take advantage of that and that we shuttle our students back and forth from Gruya, from the Real Grande City High School, to the STC campus and I know that one of the other things that we talked about and that hopefully we can talk about in the future is if we encourage our, our very own personnel to get masters in certain areas, they could then become the instructor through STC, but through our very own school and so I'd, hopefully we can see that change coming up soon. Thank you, Dr. Trevino.
You're welcome.
I would move that we approve, um, this item as presented.
Do we have a second on item twen- twenty?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Vareal. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action with dual concurrent enrollment courses, STC, STC for Real Grande City High School.
Yes, uh, once again, I'm here on behalf of Real Grande City High School. We met with the chairperson last night, Ms. Judy, um, Solis, and we discussed the precision manufacturing at Real Grande City High School, dual enrollment for precision manufacturing students.
Yes, and, um, again, there was a, a presentation done and again, I was very impressed to see that, um, these, these sorts of courses are available for our students, they weren't there when I was in high school, I, I loved seeing the pictures you had of students completing their welding certificate with their parents present and that again, this is done on school time, through our school setting, um, and I move that we approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second, item twenty-one?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Roral. Item twenty-two?
Thank you.
Consider and take possible action on career and technical courses for Gruya High School and Real Grande City High School, welding one, welding two, and welding three.
Yes, at this moment I would like to ask a representative from, uh, STC to accompany me, the director for the welding program, Eze Ledesma, and my, one of my welding instructors, Valde Reina, they will take the floor and explain to you, um, a little bit about our program, what we offer at both high schools.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, good evening. Um, this is our third year working with, uh, Real Grande, uh, School District on this program, this welding program and it's, uh, been beneficial for the students. Um, at the end they receive eight college credit hours, they receive, uh, certificate from the college and they also receive an AWS certification, which, uh, entitles them to get a job, uh, live faster anywhere in the state or in the nation and, um, pretty much it's, uh, it helps students that are not sure they want to continue to go to college, you want to go get a career right away or they want to continue their education at STC and they do get, like I said, they get eight college hours per semester. Um, this is Mr. Mr. Reina, he's one of our instructors, he's currently at, at Gruya High.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to teach your students, uh, something I take passionate and dear to my heart.
Thank you.
Do we have, uh, any more discussion on item twenty-two? Do we have a motion on item twenty-two? Do we have a, a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Roral.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on concurrent enrollment courses for Gruya High School medical billing.
Yes, uh, like, like I said last night, we met with the department chair, Ms. Judy Solis, and, uh, we explained through the health science pathway, we're asking, requesting, uh, information if we could contract STC if, uh, we have a missing teacher, uh, to fill in the, the medical billing and coding, to be prepared in case, uh, you know, we don't have an instructor for January.
Right, but this would only happen if we lose that one?
Yes, ma'am, yes. I don't know if you want to like pass it up on a different decision or how, I don't know.
No, I, I think we.
It's only if.
If, right.
Yes, ma'am.
The teacher may not be with us next semester and if that happens, then we would contract through STC to fill in this course, um, but hopefully he'll be with us.
Yes, definitely.
Next semester, so I guess you would let us know and then through the curriculum instruction committee and then we can, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Let the other board members know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on item twenty-three?
I move that we approve it as presented.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Roral. Item twenty-four, consider and pa- possible action on career and technical additional courses for Gruya High School by South Texas Nursing Academy.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Board President, um, you met the, the owners of the nursing academy a while ago when we presented the students. It is, uh, permission to renew the contract for a new cohort that will be getting from January till May.
I would so move, I mean, we've seen the fruits of their labor, we know, um, we saw it here today, the children, their parents were so excited to see them getting those certificates, I think it's a great thing and I move that we approve it as presented.
Do we have, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Roral.
Thank you.
Item twenty-eight, I mean, twenty-five, sorry. Item twenty-eight, I mean twenty-five, sorry. Consider and take possible action on start alt two training for special education.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez, superintendent and everyone that's present. Special Ed Department is seeking the approval of twenty-two, uh, star alt, uh, teachers for training due to the redesign of the star alt. Uh, we do, um, request that, um, we go ahead and approve this, we come every year to you all. It's important that our teachers have the materials together and ready before the star alt. This will be, uh, three Saturdays that they'll be working plus also Monday to Thursday, an hour and a half during this time that the state gives us two week, uh, window more or less to look over the exam and go ahead and if, uh, make accommodations for students in an individual basis, whether it's, uh, large, uh, copies, larger print or whether it's, uh, making, um, stickies or redeveloping any type of materials that we might need.
Yes, and just to clarify, yesterday we met in curriculum and instruction and you were explaining to me as the director of our special ed programs that, um, these, the requirements that the state hands down to you, they change quickly. And, um, you need to be ready to meet those challenges and obviously some of our children who are going to be taking this test, they may be self-contained and so you have to accommodate them and you have to, the teachers need to come in on Saturdays to better address how they can help our children succeed on those tests and meet their state goals. And so I would move that we would, um, approve this item as presented through the curriculum committee.
Do I have a second on item twenty-five? We have a second by Mr. Dicky Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. 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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, thank you, Ms. Basan.
Thank you, Ms. Basan.
Item twenty-six, uh, consider and take possible action on approval for to advertise for requests for qualifications for independent auditor to review districts' use of public funds.
Okay, um, this was an item that, um, we asked be added to the agenda. What we're wanting is something separate from our typical intern or, or typical audit that we talked about earlier in the agenda. Um, we're looking specifically to send out a packet, an RFQ request for qualifications for auditors that, um, handle forensic auditing. Um, also, we would want to go back possibly to two thousand ten present, if possible, and look at certain departments which the board as a whole, we can, uh, maybe through a committee, uh, maybe contracted services, maybe facilities. We can go through and, and, uh, let the, the, whichever firm submits bids know where exactly we want them to look, we can have them work in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Getta or his law firm as well. So that's what we're asking for, a request for qualifications for forensic auditing. So if you could get back some information on this, some bids, um, that would be great. Through the finance committee, that would work, yes, and in conjunction with the, um, business office. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item twenty-six?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Judy Solis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on approval of Sabas Posuna DBA successful opportunities for student contractor for services.
Mr. President, uh, I asked, uh, that this item be tabled, it's not properly before the board. This is a professional service contracts which requires the district to go out for RFPs, that has not been done, uh, to date, so therefore I asked that it be tabled, um, as of today, for today.
Any more discussion? Uh, do we have a motion on item twenty-seven?
So move.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Reports and information.
The first report that we have are the tax, uh, collections report and we have tax collected seven hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars. Uh, current, we have a hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred, uh, and nine, ninety cents, delinquent. Um, and penalty numbers, we have eighty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, as far as the second report on budget balances, if you turn to page one hundred and ten. Uh, we have the general fund, uh, year-to-date expenditures. Uh, this is through the month ending November the thirtieth. Uh, we have our budgeted amounts and that we have our actual to date, uh, with the percentages that we have spent currently. Um, we have thirty million two hundred and forty-four thousand sixty-three dollars that have actually come in for, as revenues. And we have total expenditures of thirty million six hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. Um, the expenditures are at about thirty percent, which is, uh, it's a good percentage right now for the first three months. We're on track, it's between, anywhere between twenty-five and thirty percent would be good at this point, uh, in time. So far, our excess, uh, we have an excess of expenditures over revenues of four hundred nine thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. That's for our general fund. We also have our food service fund, which has brought in two point four million dollars, that's on page one hundred and fourteen. Um, we have expenditures of two point five. And again, we're a little over expenditures on that of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We're also at about, uh, thirty percent expenditures, uh, that have, uh, that we've had in the first three months. And again, as far as the percentage, we're on schedule. Uh, and the last fund that we present to the board is, uh, on page one hundred and seventeen. Um, that is our debt service fund. So, uh, we have six point nine million dollars, we've already received money from TA for the payment of our bond, uh, payments. Uh, we do not have a payment yet, so, uh, we do not have any expenses. Uh, we only have a five hundred dollar expense at this time. That is how our expenditures look and revenues. Um, the last report is, uh, monthly check register and that's put in there for your view. Um, that'll be every single check that we've written for the month of November. So you can view it. If y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Varelas.
Thank you.
Now, we now go into closed session. It is seven thirty-six under the authority of the Texas Government Code, section five five point one, zero seven one, we're now in closed session. Alright, it's, uh, nine thirty-three and we're now out of executive session. On item A, do I have a motion on item A?
I move to table item A.
Do I have a second on item?
I second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, do I have a motion on item B?
I move to approve item B, discuss it closed session.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
We do have a second by Ms. Judy Solis, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do I have a, a motion on item C?
I move to approve item C, discuss it closed session.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Judy Solis, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. On item D, do I have a motion on item D?
I move to approve item D, discuss it closed session.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, we have a second by Ms. Judy Solis. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E, do we have a motion on item E?
Yes, uh, and I guess before I ma- make the motion, I would say, uh, apologize for the amount of time that we took in closed session. Uh, one of the issues that we discussed is this exact item and it's immensely important because, uh, it's, it's a new position, it's a new start. And, uh, we considered a few individuals, two of whom actually came and spoke with us, uh, in closed session. Both of whom are extremely highly qualified and both of whom share the vision that this school board has for its future. And, uh, before I say my, the actual motion, I will, uh, say thanks to Mr. Joel Gonzalez for his service to our district, for his continued commitment and for his passion. We thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. That being said, I motion to nominate the appointment of Mr. Joel Trigo as interim superintendent.
We still have to vote. Point of order. Point of order.
Do I have a, a second?
I do second that motion.
We didn't finish though, it's, uh, effective January first, two thousand fifteen.
We still have to take a vote. We have to take a vote. We have to take a vote.
Yes. Do I have a second on the motion?
I second that motion.
We have a second by Ms. Judy Solis, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, uh, motion is carried. Mr. Trigo, if you can come forward.
Thank you all very much, uh, Mr. Board President, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to accept the appointment of superintendent of schools for Real Grande City CISD as of the date mentioned. I look forward to serving the district in the capacity of a interim superintendent. And, uh, I can tell you that I am thankful for your consideration. I am thankful for your trust and confidence in me and I assure you that we will move forward and, uh, continue making Real Grande City CISD the, one of the best districts in the state of Texas. And, uh.
The best.
Thank you all very much, thank you, all the supporters. Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for the time that you served our district as superintendent. Well, I learned a lot from you during the time that, that I worked with you and many of your ideas, many of, of the moments we shared together, I certainly will hold, uh, true. And I will do the best that I can to follow in your footsteps, I do have large shoes to fill, but I'm up to the challenge. And I will assure you that I will do the best I can to serve the needs of all students and all staff, parents and everyone, uh, all the Real Grande City CISD family. Thank you.
Item, item F, do we have a motion on item F?
I move that, um, we approve this motion as presented in executive session, um, and with the discussion presented by our legal counsel.
Do I have a second on, on, on item F?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. And do, on item G, do I have a motion on item G?
As discussed in closed session, uh, I motion that we reject the, any settlement demands made by the claimant.
Do we have a second on item G?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu and all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do, we do have a announcement by Ms. Solis.
The personnel committee of this board, um, which I sit on as chairwoman, has approved an advertisement for the position of superintendent of this district, which has already been posted in both the Starr County Town Crier and our own school website. We as a board have decided to look for our next permanent superintendent from within our own district employees as we truly believe that no other district can match the caliber of employees produced by this community. We noticed that the last advertisement used by this district only included the need for a certificate of superintendency. We have added additionally to that, requirements that any candidate applying have a minimum of ten years experience as an administrator with a minimum five years as a campus principal. It is our belief that in order to be an effective leader, our next superintendent must have that experience in order to better empathize with our administrators, our teachers, staff and parents. So that he or she may help us usher in a new and progressive vision for our school district, thank you.
And. And with that, on behalf of the board and being, uh, the last board meeting before the holidays, we just want to wish everybody happy holidays and we'll see you next year and, uh, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.